I'd like to call the September 8th meeting of the Board of Selectment to order. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before I begin tonight's meeting, as many of you are probably aware, but for those of you who don't, town manager Julie Jacobson's son passed away suddenly over Labor Day weekend, and I would like to ask you to please join me in a moment of silence for the town manager's son, Matthew Jacobson. Thank you, and I'd ask you to please keep Julie, her husband Jake, and their daughter Alyssa, in your thoughts and prayers as they struggle with this terrible loss. The first item we have is public comment, and we have the town clerk who's here to speak on the Boston Post cane and the election.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There will be a Boston Post cane presentation. Clifford A. Granger will be presented with the Boston Post cane award on Tuesday, September 16th at 6:45 PM at the monthly meeting of the Historic Commission. That meeting will be held at the Lorraine Gleck Nordgren Senior Center at Fort Goddard Drive. Mr. Granger is the oldest resident eligible to receive this distinction. The Boston Post publication in 1909 distributed 692 canes throughout New England. It was originally presented to the oldest male citizen, but in 1921, when women were given the right to vote, it was then presented to the oldest citizen in each town. The current criteria to determine the oldest citizen is that the person meets all of the following: number one, be listed on the town census; number two, be an active registered voter; and number three, be a resident in town for more than 10 years. Boston Post went out of business in 1956, and over the years, many of these canes were lost. We in Auburn are fortunate to have the original Auburn cane, which is on display at the Auburn Historical Museum. Mr. Granger will receive a reproduction cane and a presentation certificate. Again, the date of that is Tuesday, September 16th at 6:45 PM at the Senior Center in Auburn.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before the clerk goes on, can we ask her to come to the table and join us?
Sure. Mr. Coppins would like you to come join us. I think we're having a hard time hearing with the air conditioner on.
Oh, okay.
No, I just think it's nice. The town clerk should sit at the table with us. I think we've asked other town officials to do so. I think we should. She deserves that courtesy, and it's always a good thing.
And everybody got the date and the time and the place. Okay. All right. This is an election reminder. Tomorrow, Tuesday, September 9th, is the state primary election. All of the precincts vote in the high school gym. Polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Unenrolled voters must choose which party ballot they want to vote. There is no longer a need to do a party change after voting. An unenrolled voter will remain unenrolled. There are specimen ballots that will be posted in the lobby and within the polls tomorrow. I would just like to state that all election laws have followed at every election and have been while I've been working in the town clerk's office. If there are concerns or incidents at elections that are unusual, I contact legal counsel, Elections Division of the Secretary of the Commonwealth, for disposition and adjustment based on their advice. At the May 20th, 2014 annual town election, every ballot voted was counted, whether it was an absentee ballot returned to the office or a ballot voted in person at the polls. This was verified at the recount. Election results as well as recount results are reported to the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Any comments or complaints concerning town employees must be in accordance with the personnel policy. Tuesday, November 4th, is the state election day. Thank you for your time, and please don't forget to vote tomorrow.
The next item is a telephone poll hearing, a petition by National Grid Pool Installation on Aurelia Street. A 7:00 PM hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, the hearing is open. Good evening. If you could give your name for the record and tell us, I assume you're the petitioner?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. If you could give your name for the record and tell us what you're proposing.
Yeah, my name is Javier Morales. I'm here to represent National Grid. I'd like to approve, I'd like to request the approval of a grant location of a stub pole on Aurelia Street. The reason we're putting a pole down is we need to remove a tree, and there's a guy attached to it currently.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
We need to remove a tree at this location, so we need this pole to take place of the guy that's attached to the tree currently.
And so, in your packet, you'll see. Did you have a question, Mr. Simonian?
I didn't, you said there's something attached to-
Oh, it's a guy wire. Yeah, it's attached to an existing tree. Sorry, yeah.
You can lift that up. Yeah, there you go. So you don't have to lean into it.
Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, in your packet, you'll see that the abutters have been notified. The legal posting was in the newspaper. Do members have questions to the applicant regarding the request? There are no questions. Are there any abutters? Mr. Simonian?
I don't remember seeing it in here, and I unfortunately forgot my glasses, so I can read most of it, but if this is approved, when is it going to happen?
I'm not sure.
Okay. And typically, how long will it take? Do you know?
Depends on our workload.
Okay.
Could be all the way through a year, you know?
Okay. That's fine. Thanks.
And is National Grid removing the tree, or is the town removing the tree?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Okay.
Usually, we do.
Okay.
But I'd have to, I'm not sure about that. I can get back to you with an answer tomorrow.
Okay. Are there any member questions or comments?
There isn't a butter.
I understand that we generally take a member questions or comments first?
Nope.
Okay. Are there any abutters present? If you could come forward to the microphone, please. Give your name and address for the record.
Hi, Sean Bickford, at 44 Hampton Street, and the pole and the existing tree is in my yard. And the original position they proposed last year for the replacement pole was right next to the tree, and last Wednesday, I think it was Diane Coles called me and said that there's a new position that's more in the middle of the yard where I usually sometimes park. And in addition to the telephone pole, they're going to put a guy wire on it also, and I'm concerned about that because I have, you know, two small kids and all their friends that run around. So I'd rather just leave the guy wire in the tree stump or do something else other than put in that pole with a guy wire.
So, can you tell me where the pole is in relation to the street?
I just have pictures. There is no pole. Right now, there's just an old tree that's been cut down because it was, limbs were falling off of it, that the guy wire for a telephone pole across the street is attached to. And for them to cut down the tree, they need to put up some other type of support to hold that other pole.
Right.
And the position has been moved since like last year when they originally put posts in and moved it more into the middle. I have the picture, if you want to see.
Yeah, we'd be happy to look at it, depending on what the placement of the tree and where the towns, the town owns so much from the center of the road.
Where that ball is, that's originally where they proposed to put the replacement pole?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we'll hand out the pictures, and then if you want to go, just because you have to be speaking into the microphone.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm gonna, if you can just hold on one minute, I'm gonna let members look at these photographs and then ask questions related to the photos before you continue.
If we need to hand it back, hand it back to Sharon so I can grab it.
Okay, we've had an opportunity to look at the photographs, so you can continue now.
Okay, the original position they proposed last year is where that ball is, where it's right next to the tree. And then last Wednesday, Diane came over, and she moved the stakes more over where that DS is, and says that there would be a pole there, and then behind that, there'd be a guide wire for the, to support the pole.
And so, when you referenced Diane, I assume that's a National Grid?
Yes, I called her twice again today, and I didn't get her, left her voicemail.
Okay, just so that I can, she's, she's, she's an employee of National Grid-
Yes.
-who you spoke with. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Mr. Bickford, from what I can see here, it looks like that tree is pretty much right on the street, but I'm not quite sure about how the line goes. Is that your tree, or is it the town tree?
Town tree.
It is the town tree, so it's all town property there, and the guy wire is going to go onto your property? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, I don't know what the town is. Is it three feet in or six feet in? I thought it was three feet in.
I believe it's 22 feet from the center of the road.
22 feet.
So it's not necessarily how far in on your, your property. It's from the center of the road, I believe it's, I would have to check with the DPW director, but the last time I spoke, it's like 21 or 22 feet from the center of the road to your property, because we, you know, we've dealt with this a lot, where it's unknown whether the tree is yours to cut down or the town's to cut down, and that certainly is, you know, the responsibility of the town where that-
Okay.
...that tree is. And so, I don't know if there are any other abutters here, but certainly, if we want to hold this, we can wait till Mr., we can ask Mr. Coyle for further information. Mr. Simonian?
How far, how far in is that second stake where, I'm assuming the first stake is where the pole will be, and the second stake is where the guide wire will fall?
Yes. That's, I didn't measure it. It's probably like six or seven feet from the curb.
I don't, I don't mind holding it, but I just wonder, and I understand that, you know, the amount of land that the town owns. I have, I have, actually have one of the National Grid poles and a guide wire in my side yard, and it, I don't believe it goes back that far, because it certainly doesn't. And I'm, I'm just wondering if in, in the time we wait till the next meeting to talk, have Mr. Coyle come before us as well, if, I mean, if there was an alternate position that less affected Mr. Bickford's property, maybe National Grid could work with him, and then it wouldn't be so much of an issue. If he worked out something easier. That is a considerable amount of yard, especially if he has children running around, thinking maybe we could work something out there.
I'm not completely familiar with the job, but I could have the original designer call Ms. Bickford tomorrow and see if they could come up with another design.
I think that would be great, but we'll also be speaking to this again at our next meeting as well, so.
And we'd also, we'd also like to include our DPW director in this conversation as well.
Sure.
Mr. Bill Coyle.
Yeah, I'll put in a request to the designer that she meet with, the, Mr. Coyle and Mr. Bickford here.
Okay. Are there any other abutters here? Is there any additional public comment?
Make a motion to hold the item till our next meeting.
To continue the hearing?
Or to continue the hearing till our next meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? They'll bring that information back if we continue with that, we've continued the hearing, and ask them to contact Mr. Coyle as well as the property owner.
That's fine.
Is there anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you for coming in.
Mr. Bickford, have we, have you got copies of these pictures so we can keep these and hand these to Mr. Coyle, so he'll have a chance to look at them?
You can have those.
All right, great.
Thank you.
And I'm sure, I'm sure he'll visit the property tomorrow as well. The next item we have is a change of manager on the liquor license for Bentley Pub LLC at 602 Southwood Street. It was a 7-10 hearing. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The hearing is open. Good evening. If you could give your name for the record and tell us why you're before us tonight.
Donna Bioregad, 28 Perry Street in Auburn. Change of management on the liquor license for Bentley Pub.
Okay. And that change of manager is you?
Correct.
Okay. And are you currently working at Bentley's Pub?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So you're familiar with the tip certification, the requirements?
Correct.
Do members have any questions or comments?
I have nothing.
Ms. Bioregad.
It's pretty standard.
No, it's pretty standard. ABCC form?
I just have one question. I think this might have been brought up before. And on the personal information form, the last-
(noise)
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, which page are you on? Manager application?
Yeah, the manager application. The last, the last section, please list employment for the past 10 years. I don't know if I've ever seen that filled in, and if, if it's not required, I don't even know why it's there, but I'm just curious. Is that a requirement of having this filled out?
Well, I mean, it's an application to the ABCC. Is there a reason that you left it blank? Did the attorney fill it, complete it?
No, my general manager did.
Do you want to ask any questions regarding her experience?
No, I was, I was just curious. I didn't know if the ABCC required that to be, it's on the form, so I just-
If you can just give your name for the record, please.
I'm Jim Taylor. I'm general manager of Bentley Pub. I was told by Patty Bioregad not to bother with it, wasn't needed.
Fair enough. Thanks.
And Mr. Holstrom is working on all of the applications, so you'll make a note of that.
Yes, I will.
Follow up with Patsy on that, to see if we need to have that. Thank you. Are there any questions? Any public questions or comment? Seeing none. Is there, did you have anything else to add?
Nope.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the application?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of the manager from Mr. Christopher Kelly to Ms. Donna Bioregad.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Good luck in your new position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Entertain a motion to move up Board of Selectment item 5E, gift acceptance?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. So if you'll pull up your gift acceptance, we have a lot of them, but we have, the first one that we're going to discuss is the Friends of the Pappas Recreation Complex. Mr. Kaznovich, if you can tell us a little bit about this impressive gift.
Sure. Items number one and two under 5E have to do with gifts relating to a new children's playground proposed for the Pappas Recreational Complex. This has been a year and a half in the making as a result of a challenge grant that was proposed by Dr. Arthur and Martha Pappas. I can tell you that the Friends of the Pappas Recreation Complex have been working very hard in their fundraising efforts, and Mr. Ben Vinuti is here to share with you some good news relative to the donation that is before you tonight. We also have to address item 6A that has to do with the recreational complex as well. Just to let you know, we have been awarded a grant. That will require a separate vote, but that has to do with this, these items as well. Mr. Ben Vinuti?
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I dropped off a check to the town manager's office last week for the, in the amount of $30,000 towards the construction of the Pappas Recreational Playground, which is ADA certified and should be a beautiful addition to that whole complex up there, so.
Excellent. Good work. So also, in your packet, we have, so from Mr. Ben Vinuti and the Friends of the Pappas Recreation Complex, we have $30,000, and then from Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas, and the amount of $33,300 for the playground at the Pappas Recreation Complex. And we also have a gift from the Greater Worcester Community Foundation. The designated use is the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex Fund for the Children's Playground Project, and that's in the amount of $16,332.48. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude and send a letter of thank you. That's pretty awesome fundraising effort.
So there's a motion to accept with gratitude and send a letter to the Friends of the Recreation Complex as well as to Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas. Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And thank you, Dr. Martha Pappas, for being here and for that generous gift, and thank you, Mr. Ben Vinuti. I know that you guys have worked hard on, on this challenge grant, and your hard work has paid off.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pappas. Very much thank you.
So we'll just, to continue on, so we're not jumping around on the agenda, I'm going to continue with the gift acceptance. So from, for the fire department gift account, we have from Gerald and Mary Lou DeLongchamp in the amount of $100, and we have to the fire department gift account from Fabiola Zudema Estate in the amount of $1,000. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And then, in your packet that you presented tonight, these are all gifts to the Auburn Animal Shelter in memory of Matt Jacobson. The following gifts that I'll read. Patricia McKeon for $25, Mark and Susan Moss in the amount of $50, Scott Seaman, DMD, Paxton Dental Care, $40, the Town of Auburn employees, $150, Richard and Anita Fenton in the amount of $150, Darcy and Thomas McCarthy Jr. in the amount of $50, Joseph and Maureen Canol in the amount of $25, Lamro Pagano Associates in the amount of $250, Mastermans in the amount of $100, Connie McBreyer and Teresa, Teresa Mayer in the amount of $25, Jessica Rollins in the amount of $20, the Fuller Family in the amount of $50, and Ed and Ellie Olson in the amount of $65. Again, those are all gifts to the Animal, Auburn Animal Shelter in memory of Matthew Jacobson, and I believe those total $1,000, $1,000 in gifts. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone. And the last item we have is, and the gift account is from Steve Simonian with a value of $30 for a dog crate designated use to Kathy Sabina Animal Compound.
Motion to reject.
Excellent.
(laughing). Sorry. Motion to accept with gratitude, Steve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Recused from-
And Steve recused. Okay. Thank you, so. And did, did you want us to take up the, the grant or wait on that? You said there was one tied in to that.
It's up to the board.
We'll, we'll come back to it. The town manager item said. So the next item in your packet is Communications. Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization has requested a board member in attendance for the meeting for the designation of a Central Mass designee on the board. Is there a member who's interested in attending this meeting on Thursday, September 25th at 6:30?
I'll be happy to.
Mr. Simonian? Okay. So at that time, they, what they'll do is, they'll take a vote of all member towns, and they'll designate a member from Central Mass to represent us on that board. The representative from Oxford is leaving, leaving the board, so thank you for that. And we will send the designation, Sharon? Mr. Simonian? Okay. Was there anyone else interested? I mean, Mr. Simonian?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. All righty, Mr. Simonian, thank you. Next item is a vote on the bond and note board, and we need to sign the notes. And do you want Mr. Holstrom to read the motion, or do you want to discuss it first?
Just a quick update-
Okay.
...to inform the board as to what actually transpired. We had a general obligation bond issue of 16.5 million, primarily made up of bonds for the Auburn Middle School project, about 13.3 million. Also, in the 16.5 is roughly 1,400,000 of refunding bonds for a bond issue that we went out on for the design of the proposed Auburn High School when it was up on Prospect Street, and roughly $2.1 million of general obligation bonds to handle our annual capital needs. We received a, a rate of 2.62 based upon their borrowing with a forced premium of roughly $1.1 million. Their premium will be set aside and reserved in accordance with DOR regulations that will allow us to pay debt and interest net of our issuance cost over the remaining period of those bonds. We also went out for 11.2 million of short-term debt. They are called bond anticipation notes. $10,100,000, just under $10,100,000 was for notes that relate directly to the cost of construction of the Auburn Middle School. We have now, on a cash flow purpose, borrowed 100% of our need. We will be bonding that roughly a year from now. In addition to that, we borrowed for our FY '15 capital needs, which is the remaining balance of that, about 1.1 million as well. We received a rate of 1.25. We had a forced premium of 124,000 and change, leaving us a net interest cost of 0.141. So these rates are very good. And once again, we got good, solid rates as a result of our bond rating, which I'll get into as the next agenda item.
Great. Thank you so much. Mr. Holstrom?
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Yes. Make a motion that, now, this has to be read into the record, I understand, so we'll all have to go through.
Every word and number.
Okay. Make a motion that in order to reduce insurance interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any enabling authority, to refund the town's $3,270,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2003, bonds dated December 1st, 2003, and maturing on December 1st in the years 2015 through 2020, inclusive in the aggregate principal amount of $1,400,000 known collectively as the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal and interest on the refunded bonds and- to pay the principal and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. I further move that the sale of $16,425,667 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2014 bonds of the town dated September 15th, 2014, known as the bonds, to Citigroup Global Markets Incorporated at the price of $17,539,666.50 is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on September 15th of the years and in principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. In 2015, $1,090,667 at a 5% rate. 2016, $1,600,000 at a 2% rate. 2017, $1,450,000 at a 5% rate. 2018, $1,040,000 at a 5% rate. 2019, $1,400,000 at a 5% rate. 2020, $1,400,000 at a 5% rate. 2021, $880,000 at a 5% rate. 2022, $875,000 at a 5% rate. 2023, $875,000 at a 3% rate. And 2024, $680,000 at a 3% rate. 2025, $680,000 at 3%. 2026, $680,000 at 3%. 2027, $680,000 at 3%. 2028, $680,000 at 3%. 2029, $680,000 at 3%. 2030, $680,000 at 3%. 2031, $680,000 at 3%. 2032, $680,000 at 3%. 2033, $680,000 at 3.125%. And 2034, $680,000 at 3.125%. I further move to approve the sale of $11,215,922, a 1.25% general obligation bond anticipation note of the town dated September 15th, 2014, and payable September 15th, 2015, known as the notes, to Eastern Bank at par plus a premium of $124,384.57. I further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated August 20th, 2014, and a final official statement dated September 4th, 2014, known as the official statement, each in such form that may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. I further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated August 27th, 2014, and a final official statement dated September 4th, 2014, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. I further move that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions that are set forth in the official statement. I further move that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and are hereby authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure undertakings, and compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes, as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. I further move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of bonds and notes. And finally, I further move that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect provisions of the foregoing notes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
Town clerk needs to come up. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So if members don't have any objection, while we're signing the notes, Mr. Kazanovich would like to give us an update on the report of the bond rating, unless you prefer to wait until we all sign.
Sure.
Okay. So we're happy to begin the signatures, and, well, Mr. Kazanovich gives us an update on our bond rating.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and viewing audience. I'm happy to report to you tonight, due to a lot of hard work by the Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Hussey is in attendance tonight, as well as the management team, we have maintained our AA+ rating that was given to us by Standard &amp; Poor's. That rating has been affirmed. Please know that these ratings were granted based upon information provided to the rating agencies that are un-audited numbers. So in the case of Moody's, we received a positive outlook, which is good news for the town, given the fact that the financial information is not audited. That speaks volumes about Auburn's commitment to its stable financial situation. I can tell you that this positive outlook by Moody's, even though they affirmed a AA3 rating, allows them to reassess Auburn's financial situation once the financial statements are issued by an independent auditor. We believe that the numbers provided to them will be verified and confirmed through that audit, which will be done through June 30th of '14. We're expecting the audit to be completed sometime, or commenced sometime in January with financial statements issued in March. I'd like to thank the entire financial management team who worked very hard preparing and trying to paint a positive picture of Auburn's finances to the rating agencies. And in doing so, we've been given full recognition by Moody's that we're moving in the right direction, because we've demonstrated there's a history there, a credible history that they can rely on. And we've built our financial models based upon adoption of the financial policies that were adopted by the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee in the fall of '12. They've been implemented at the budget. Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's have seen results of those adopted financial policies by way of revenue and expenditure surpluses that have helped us build up our undesignated fund balance to historic levels, about 6.9 million in undesignated fund balance with anticipated free cash certification of slightly over $6 million. Those numbers will be submitted to the Department of Revenue within the coming weeks, and we're expecting certification by the end of the month, maybe early October. I want to thank the Finance Committee and all its members for supporting town administration's recommendations in an effort to gain these results. We've had modest growth. We have not taxed to 2.5 in the past five years. We've built up excess levy. At the same time, we're building up our reserves, which is all duly noted in the report by Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's as being some of our financial strengths. Given that, we believe that when we go to market again in September to address the bands that we're currently seeking tonight, that we will be rated once again. We believe at that time, we will receive an upgrade from Moody's, from a AA3 to a AA2. We have to make sure that we keep the course. Moody's is going to, over the next 24 months, not only look at our financial statements for FY14, they're also going to want to see indicators for FY15 that are going to show similar results and lead to increased surpluses, increased free cash, and increased reserves as well. That being said, Madam Chair, members of the board, I can only tell you that we are very proud to bring this before you tonight. Once again, it couldn't be done without the hard work of many of you. The Board of Selectmen have supported this as well, Finance Committee, School Committee, as well as all the employees in the management team for Auburn. We're proud to say that we're on the cusp of getting an upgrade in the future by Moody's, and we're very proud of that.
Thank you, Mr. Kazanovich. And thank you for recognizing Chairman Hussey and his committee, your staff, your entire management team. And I know, you know, when I spoke with the town manager, she wanted to be here, unfortunately, but the tragedy that she suffered, she couldn't. But she sends her sincere appreciation as CFO. You are certainly leading the charge in these bond upgrades, and she extends her sincere thanks for your hard work.
Thank you. And without Julie, we wouldn't be here tonight. She has been working very hard with everyone else on the finance team to make this thing happen, so I'd like to thank Julie. I wish she could be here tonight to share in this celebration, this news. And so our thoughts and prayers are with her as well. But once again, we are a team. We are a very cohesive team, and we will continue to bring positive results to this board in the coming months.
Thank you again.
Eddie, thank you very much. Thank you.
And we are just going to continue to sign about another 20 documents.
And God bless the person who put these together.
Yeah. That's me. I wonder how many of my signatures look the same.
They'll be fine.
If writers print by the time we're done.
And all of these documents do need to be signed in public in the presence of the town clerk. That's why we're taking our time now to do it.
Mr. Hussey? Mr. Hussey? Do we have any money in the account to get stamps without names? There's no money in that account.
Sign it from the top.
Should I do it just initial it?
Just a side. So just, she can put treasure under here.
Yeah, she can.
Yeah, she can just put treasure under here.
No, it'll couple it down along the line.
That's the last one.
Oh, good. Thank you.
That's the one we're looking for, huh?
Thank you.
Everybody's got writers. What's that? She signed the book, yeah. Yeah, but the treasure can sign.
Okay.
Making all the gifts.
Right.
That is it.
Okay.
I don't want to take your stuff.
You're good.
Okay.
Moving on to Board of Selectmen general items, we have 5C. It's regarding the scheduling of the Fall Town Meeting. I would entertain a motion to schedule the Fall Town Meeting for Tuesday, October 21st, 2014, at 7:00 PM.
Motion to schedule the Fall Town Meeting on Tuesday, October 21st, 2014, at 7 o'clock PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. I would also entertain a motion to open the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting at tonight's meeting.
Motion to open the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. I'd also entertain a motion to close the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting on Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 4:00 PM.
Motion to close the Fall Town Meeting warrant on Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 4:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Let us have a point. There are boards that are meeting after. We meet on a Monday. I'd ask that we hold it to September 29th, so that boards who are meeting in that third or fourth week have an opportunity to put something together for town meeting.
Create any issues with the timing?
Well, this is a Fall Town Meeting, so we're required to get the warrant to town meeting members two weeks prior to the actual town meeting. That is going to, that's going to squeeze us a little bit and not allow Attorney Henigan to review the warrant. I don't know how much time that would allow him to do a full review of the warrant.
Mr., did you have follow-up on that?
No. I mean, we have town meetings, so that our boards and commissions can do the business of the town. The 22nd isn't going to allow all of the boards that have meetings to do what they need to do. So if we need to move the date from the 21st, I mean, maybe that's something that we need to look at.
Well, if I may, we notified all individual, school committee, all other departments, well before tonight that the warrant was going to open, in anticipation of any review or request that they may want to bring before their boards. That being the case, we have checked with the schools on the 21st. That date is available. I couldn't tell you, I couldn't give you an alternate date without first checking with the schools to find out whether or not the auditorium would be available for a meeting.
When you notify them, do you give them a date, Ed?
We give them a proposed date. Yes, we do.
Because I know Planning Board isn't meeting tomorrow night, so they're not going to meet till the 23rd. So they're not going to be, if they have something, or any of the other boards and commissions, they're not going to be able to do anything for this Fall Town Meeting, which, considering that regular town meeting is all but impossible for land use boards to bring anything to it because of the length, not only of the previous. So I would just like to take that bit of wisdom from my prior service and try and do that here. But again, it's a board vote. I'm prepared to, you know, whatever the will of the board is.
Madam Chair, if I may, I can tell you, Mr. Carpenter, that the support staff for those boards and committees have known this well in advance. In preparation of any Fall Town Meeting, we try, we give them the courtesy of being able to bring these, any issues or any concerns that may come up. We've talked about this at department head meetings. Individuals have known that this was coming for a while. This is just a formal process of opening and closing the warrant, but the word gets out there well in advance that if there are any warrant articles that need to be addressed at a Fall Town Meeting, now is the time to act. So this has been out there for a while.
I know you can only speak to your board. Do you know if the Economic Development Committee has any thoughts of presenting anything at town meeting?
No, we just got some good responses from the survey that we sent out, so we're going to be working on that. We're going to be working on a new demo for the town. Anita Santis, who came before the board a little while ago, she's working on that. So hopefully, in short term, we'll have some good information to share.
And I know that the bylaw review committee is still working on that and is actually looking for potentially a separate town meeting for those. Would that also include if the zoning board of appeals had any recommended zoning changes? Could they be put on to that town meeting?
Well, any changes that may be proposed by zoning could be brought into any town meeting, but certainly the bylaw review is separate and distinct, and it does not include zoning. Certainly, at some point in time, that will have to be addressed as a separate item. The bylaw review in itself is, the magnitude of that is, they've been working on that for well over a year, so. That's going to require its own special town meeting, because to bring that in at a Fall or annual would just bog down all the other items that are historically voted on at those meetings.
Okay.
I'm just curious. So when you say that all the other boards are notified, are they given a prospective timeframe since the dates aren't approved until this meeting? Or you give them a timeframe, it'll be somewhere in this period probably?
We generally keep it open for two weeks.
Right. No, but if you said, in response to Mr. Carpenter, you said that the boards were amply notified ahead of time, but the dates aren't actually approved till tonight by the Board of Selectmen. So do you just give them a timeframe, and how far in advance do they get that?
At the last couple of department head meetings, we remind the staff, to boards and committees, as well as the department heads, that we are preparing for a Fall Town Meeting, most likely to take place end of October. That being said, if there are any needs out there that have not been addressed at the annual, please be reminded that you need to consider or prepare any additional needs for the Fall Town Meeting. This just formally, by a vote of the board, opens up the warrant for a period of two weeks, but they've known for a while that this was going to happen.
So I understand exactly what you're saying about the, you know, it's put out there at the department head meetings, and I guess maybe, I think, to make, possibly make it more formal, and a typical project team, you just send out a quick acknowledgement and something someone has to return in writing. Yes, I've been informed that, you know, this is a deadline or something. I don't know. Maybe we do something that simple to, I would think maybe that would satisfy some of what Mr. Carpenter suggested. At least we get acknowledging back. We don't think we're going to have any, or we're aware, and if at our meeting prior, a month prior to, something of that nature. This might kind of help that sometimes, I know a lot of people have a lot of things going on, both in and outside of their day-to-day. So just a thought.
Good idea, Steve.
So, Mr. Kaczynowicz, and I don't know how the vote will go. If there was a consideration for changing the date of the town meeting, are there any concerns with anything that has to happen in that timeframe? I mean, first of all, we'd have to revisit our vote that we just took to schedule the Fall Town Meeting, and then...
I wouldn't be able to give you a date tonight, but I could tell you, we try to at least get through a Fall Town Meeting that would allow the assessor ample time to prepare and certify for the tax rate.
Right, we have the tax classification.
So it makes it much more difficult, the later we go into the fall, for the entire assessor's department to do what they have to do in order to get the tax bills out, and bring the tax classification hearing before you prior to setting the tax rate.
So, and I certainly can't speak for any other boards, but watching any of the other meetings, I mean, there's certainly been no indication that they have had discussion on presenting a town meeting warrant article. I know, and I'll refer back to your experience, Mr. Carpenter, I believe any warrant articles that come out of the Planning Board are generally street acceptance. Are there, is, I mean, I haven't heard any discussion at any of the meetings for a potential warrant article.
Nor have I. Planning Board does the master plan, it does basically, it does all the hearings for zoning articles. So mostly, most, everything goes through Planning when it comes to zoning.
Right, and I'm just saying, I haven't heard, you know, generally, they would have a public hearing for public input, and I haven't heard anything. So I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to believe that there's nothing on the horizon coming out of ZBA or Planning or Conservation, having watched, they haven't had any discussion at any of their meetings.
And I think if there is any consideration for warrant article, and they're not allowed to vote on it, we could always treat it as a placeholder on the warrant. If there is a move afoot to bring something forward, we can always put a placeholder, knowing that the intent is for the committee to vote it. And if it's not voted, we can always pull it off the warrant.
Okay. Yeah, and we've seen that happen. That's actually reasonable. So is there any further discussion?
No.
So we're on the motion to close a warrant for the Fall Town Meeting on Monday, September 22nd, at 4:00 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The next item we have is a vote on the Board of Selectmen's Designee for the School Buildings Committee. We had this on our last agenda. Mr. Grossman has been serving on the School Buildings Committee as the Board of Selectmen Designee. The Designee does not have to be a member of the Board of Selectmen, but Mr. Simonian asked to hold this item because you were absent, Mr. Carpenter, and he didn't know if you had an interest in serving on that committee.
Well, the charter prevents me from serving on the committee. I did talk to Mr. Grossman. He's been on it from the beginning, and he'd like to continue, and I would wholeheartedly like to see him continue representing the town and doing what he does best.
Okay. So is there a motion in that regard?
Make a motion that we have Bob Grossman on the Board of Selectmen's Designee on the School Buildings Committee.
Second.
Sure, second. Just under discussion, because, you know, law concerns on this board, I think we, you know, like to ask Mr. Grossman just to provide us even with a quarterly update, or if there was something significant where he's not sitting on this board, just to pass that message along that, you know, we'd like him to continue to serve as our Designee, but to give us some type of update, either quarterly or when something of significant happens on the School Buildings Committee. Mr. Holstrom.
And one other question. He's going to be the Designee. Is that for a period of one year? Is that till the end of the committee? Pardon?
I think it's a three-year.
Three-year.
It's a three-year. Okay. Thank you.
And that would go from, I mean, he's been continuing to serve until he had a replacement, so it would go to the end of his, the June date?
June 30th.
Three years from this past June 30th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. And we've handled gift acceptance. Next, we have proclamations. We have a request from the Chamber of Commerce for a proclamation welcoming Bremen termite and pest elimination to their new location here in Auburn, which will include a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Thursday, September 11th, at 5:15. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to approve a proclamation for the ceremony, of the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Bremen termite and pest elimination.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And we are covered, because we have it under proclamations. The town clerk has just informed us that Mr. Clifford Granger, who's done so much for the community, will be receiving the Boston Post cane, is, I'd like to entertain a motion that we provide Mr. Granger for, with a proclamation for that recognition, as well as the incredible contributions he's made to the town of Auburn.
Motion to approve proclamation for Mr. Clifford Granger for his award of the Boston Post cane.
Second. Any second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We're just going to take a minute here and sign this proclamation that we just approved for Bremen pest. You're next for the town manager items. Yeah, and then next, we have town manager items, so first being to apply for and accept a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism. Mr. Kaczynowicz.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. This $80,000 grant is related to the previous items on donations for the recreational equipment, up at the new playground equipment, up at the complex, Pappas complex. This was an earmark in the FY15 budget under the Mass Office of Tourism and Travel. In order to access these funds, we have to file and treat this as though it were a grant. We have to provide a scope of services tomorrow that indicates the scope of work required to purchase, install the equipment. Upon execution of vote tonight, we will provide that tomorrow, and that will help. That'll be a supplement to the money that you accepted tonight from the Friends of the Pappas recreational complex, as well as the $50,000 donated by Dr. Arthur Amatha Pappas. Total cost of the playground equipment is estimated to be somewhere in the vicinity of $200,000. There was an additional $50,000 donated by the Pappas's early on, when they initiated the challenge grant. Their total contribution towards this project is $100,000. $30,000 from the Friends, $80,000 from this Mark grant, giving us about $210,000.
Thank you. Mr. Holstrom.
To the chair. Eddie, is this a competitive grant? Is there a chance we could get short of $80,000? Or we apply for it, we should be able to get that?
No, there was, I think roughly, $8 million earmark for 76, 70-some-odd projects statewide. They are going to phase that in two rounds. The sooner we get our request in, although, albeit, the money will be committed from a cash flow purpose, we'll receive our money earlier, the earlier we get it in. But this money is fully committed once it is granted, with no risk of losing it.
Great. Thank you.
And these are votes that went through the House and the Senate.
Yes. This was passed by a vote of both House and Senate.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we apply for and accept a grant from the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism, $80,000.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next, we have the grant application for St. Vincent's Community Health Fund, and the amount of $1,200. Mr. Kaczynowicz.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, this also is a, this is a competitive grant. Over the last several years, we have received roughly $1,200 from St. Vincent's Community Healthcare Fund. These monies would be used to support client transportation for our elder services. So we are looking for authorization to apply for and accept, if granted, the amount of $1,200.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to apply for and accept the St. Vincent's Community Healthcare Fund grant in the amount of $1,200.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. And finally, Mr. Kaczynowicz, regarding surplus equipment.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, I was hoping Mr. Mitchell would be in attendance tonight to explain to you the purpose of this letter before you tonight. I can tell you, there is an itemization of equipment that is in disrepair. They are looking to declare the surplus that would allow them to either bid or scrap these items at a cost that would generate the most revenue for the town. The items before you range from dump bodies, there are two dump bodies, roller pack deluxe roller, front hydraulic backhoe bucket, 1987 GMC dump truck, 1991 GMC dump truck, 1994 International Dump Truck, and a 1998 Elgin sweeper. Under the Parks Division, there's a 1997 Jacobson lawnmower. Looking for approval from the board that will allow us to dispose this in a proper manner.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom.
I know that Mr. Coyle has been to us several times, and he had made note about some of the materials he was using, and some of the equipment he was using. He was trying to get some of this replaced. I do recall some of these being in that list, that they were past their prime and have been pretty well used. So, yeah, this has been an ongoing thing, and it's, so now this is official, just a formal thing to make it happen.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we...
Declare surplus.
Allow the surplus equipment presented to us tonight from the Department of Public Works to declare it as surplus property. Or equipment.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Did you have anything else, Mr. Kaczynowicz?
No, I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. We have no tabled items, under Board of Selectmen member items. The first item is a request for a vote on a reception for Ann Weston. Mr. Carpenter.
Sure. I think I sent an email out to everybody to make them aware that, asked for a proclamation, which you did approve, and I requested a reception. That hasn't been acted on, so I would just request that we act in the affirmative on it.
And if you wouldn't mind, I think it would probably be best, because they're tied in, if you want to address a... Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Holstrom.
I know that Mr. Coyle has been to us several times, and he had made a note about some of the materials he was using and some of the equipment he was using. He was trying to get some of this replaced. I do recall some of these being in that list, that they were past their prime and have been pretty well used. So, yeah, this has been an ongoing thing, and it's, so now this is official, just a formal thing to make it happen.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we-
Declare surplus.
Allow the surplus equipment presented to us tonight from the Department of Public Works to declare it as surplus property. All equipment.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Did you have anything else, Mr. Kaznovich?
No, I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. We have no tabled items, under Board of Selectmen member items. The first item is a request for a vote on a reception for Ann Weston. Mr. Carpenter.
Sure. I think I sent an email out to everybody to make them aware that, asked for a proclamation, which you did approve, and I requested a reception. That hasn't been acted on, so I would just request that we act in the affirmative on it.
And if you wouldn't mind, I think it would probably be best, because they're tied in, if you want to address A and B, because we're looking, that would tie into a reception, looking to develop a policy. So, if you want to address item B as well-
Sure.
-then we can take the motion separately.
I fleshed out in general terms in the email to you all about the policy. It's essentially asking the board, when a person, whether they be a volunteer board member of service of 10 years or greater, or a employee retires who has more than 10 years, I would amend that slightly in case of someone having a disability or a medical reason that they might retire, we would certainly still want to recognize their service. But beyond that, I think it's fitting that the Board of Selectmen show our appreciation for the volunteers, as well as staff in town. And we started off very well with Mr. Grossman, who, you know, rarely that is a person who spent 18 years plus serving his town as a volunteer, and I think that's something that we should want to foster and facilitate and let people know that we do appreciate them. And that's the reason behind the proposal.
Are there any comments, questions? Mr. Holstrom.
I do agree that people that have had many years of service to the town, whether it be volunteer, paid service, their commissions, their councils, whatever they be, they should be recognized. However, the individual should be recognized by that individual board and not always by the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen should make note that that person evidently is retiring or moving on, doing something, if they have, you know, the criteria of the 10 years that you're talking about. And we should make mention here at our meeting. And you had mentioned that Bob Grossman, we did have a reception for him. Yes, he was a board member, and he had been here for six terms. So, yes, we should show our appreciation, recognize the gentlemen of this board for that type of thing. But when I retired from the Fire Department almost three years ago now, the Fire Department did something for me. It was not through the Board of Selectmen. And I believe that any council, board member that are going to be retiring after a long-term, and their efforts should be recognized, but not by the Board of Selectmen, other than just a mention, they should be recognized by the individual boards on their own.
Mr. Simonian?
So, I agree with most of what Mr. Holstrom said, and my reason is this. I absolutely agree that people should be recognized for contributions to the town in whatever aspect, that they served. But I, I'm more of the school of thought, I think that it should be done on a case-by-case basis, because I think that someone could serve less than 10 years, but just, you know, make stellar contributions that certainly, when you start to set a specific criteria or things of that nature, and my perfect example is something like the Hall of Fame. When you start saying, if you achieve this, you automatically get in, all of a sudden now, you know, it becomes more commonplace than actually recognizing the individual contribution that a person may have had. And I also think that, you know, for the most part, a lot of the, a lot of the boards and committees of the Fire Department, such that, you know, a specific person served on, I know, you know, some of the ones, receptions that Julie has had right here in this room for people have been, have been, you know, pretty good events, and, you know, the different departments have certainly been invited, and it's been, I think, I think the way that it's currently been done is great, because I don't think there's anyone that has slipped through the cracks that we've missed, and I, because I think for the most part, as Mr. Holstrom pointed out, most of the departments do a pretty good job of recognizing the people that serve and notifying us and notifying, you know, certainly Ed and Julie, and, you know, typically, there's either something sent out or something held, and everyone's welcome to attend. So, you know, that's just my opinion. Like I said, I think the case-by-case acknowledging, you know, the individual for certain contributions, rather than just setting some criteria, saying if you served 10 years, you, you know, certainly is noble to serve for a length of time, but I think that you can then possibly miss other accomplishments that someone made. So, that's my two cents on that.
I'll go next. So, absolutely, I would absolutely agree with recognizing, especially board and committee members with a proclamation. I mean, you know, Ms. Weston served 25 years, and I absolutely would agree with inviting her in and presenting a proclamation at the start of a meeting. But I would also agree with, with Mr. Holstrom and Mr. Simonian, that having a reception is, you know, and I'm happy to look at it as a subcommittee as well, but, you know, to do it each time individually, I think, would be difficult. We could look at something, you know, doing it twice a year, or quarterly, or whatever. But absolutely, I support inviting, especially board and commission members, in to recognize their volunteer service with a proclamation at the start of our meeting. But I think, especially where we have so many scheduling issues in this meeting room prior to our board meeting, I think a reception, unknown scheduling of receptions would be difficult.
I too believe in a proclamation.
Okay.
It's a board vote, Madam Chair, so it's entirely up to the board. If people don't feel that it's a good idea, that's fine.
I don't, I mean, I'm not, I think it's a wonderful idea to, and first of all, because we're on A, to invite Ms. Weston in, present her with a proclamation, recognize her 25 years of service to the Conservation Commission, not only her service, but her services chairman, working with consultants and DEP. I mean, it's a very, very technical, technical board, and I fully support inviting Ms. Weston in to present her with a proclamation. So, we're on A if anyone wants to make a motion to such.
I would make a motion that we host a reception for Ann Weston for 25 years of service to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
A reception?
Yes.
And Mr. Simonian has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to invite Ms. Weston in to present her with a proclamation?
A motion, make a motion to invite Mrs. Ann Weston to a Board of Selectmen meeting for, and award her with a proclamation for her 25 years of service to the Conservation Commission in the Town of Auburn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And we had discussion on the recognition. I think we had some pretty good feedback about proclamations and looking at reception. So, is there a motion to refer it to the subcommittee?
I think we've got a general sense that the board is not interested in it, so I would remove the item from consideration.
I'm happy to accept your motion. I just, I don't think that was necessarily the direction of the board. I think that the board, the consensus was, you know, developing a policy to recognize with a proclamation. It's up to you, Mr. Carpenter.
I stand by my motion, Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Carpenter has made a motion to withdraw his request. Is there a second?
Second.
He made it in the form of a motion.
Oh, all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Mr. Simonian?
I know, I know we already voted on A, but this is, I supported that, because this is one of the things I'm talking about. This is one of the occasions where I think that a reception probably could have been in order. 25 years, that's a quarter of a century. That's a long part of someone's life, and that's, I think of the hours that people put in. In this case, this is one of the instances where I would have supported a reception, as I did. So, you know, that's what I mean when I say, on a case-by-case basis, you've got to look at the individual, the service, the accomplishments, so.
Is there anything else on this? Are there any other member items? Is there any public comment? We have the minutes of April 14th. Are there any omissions or corrections? If none, the chair will accept them as presented. Is there anything else before the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.